Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Joe, call the March 11th, 2005 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to order. We'll start with public comment. There are multiple opportunities for public comment at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning, or you can make comments after the presentation that will be during the middle of the meeting. Members of the public may address the council at any time, in person or virtually. Those who've signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I'll wait a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. We have no members of the public in city council chambers tonight. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak?
No, and we don't have any members of the public with us virtually either.
Okay. Well, for those watching later, as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawwa.gov. And we'll now move on to our next agenda item. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda. We did receive a public comment in our general emails that we often don't announce the subject of our meetings at the beginning, so I will announce it's comm. 0085. No, it's not. That's wrong. All right, I'm looking at the minutes. Well, we do need to see if there's an objection to approval of the minutes. My apologies. Any objection? All right, the minutes from February 11th there are passed then. And we'll now move on to the agenda item, comm. 0097 Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project Update. And this evening, we have John Mortenson, Traffic Engineer Manager, to give us the presentation. Good evening.
Thank you very much, Chair Joe. Good evening, committee members. My name is John Mortenson, Transportation Engineering Manager, here to give a presentation and get some feedback on the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement The purpose of the item that I'm presenting before you tonight is that the administration is requesting feedback from the committee about the draft design study report for Project TR-068 Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project and the timing for consideration of a lower-cost preferred alternative. The direction that the administration is asking from the committee is, number one, does the committee support the design study report and its recommended preferred alternative? And number two, does the committee support considering the lower-cost preferred alternative during deliberations for the 2028 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan? A little bit of background on the project. It is located on Squawk Mountain along 12th Avenue Northwest and Mount Olympus Drive Northwest. On the southern end, the project begins at Southwest Mount Markham Place, and on the northern end, the project ends just before Northwest Furwood Boulevard. Some background on the history of the touchpoints for this project to date. The planning effort began in May of 2023, and it began with a public engagement survey that we're calling the Phase 1 Survey and Data Analysis. And then, from there, the administration took the feedback from the community and worked through some alternatives. In April of 2024, the administration came to this committee and talked about whether we wanted to look at revising the street standards to allow for deviations to the landscape strip, considering locations like Squawk Mountain where we're trying to preserve trees. And in August of 2024, we went out and got feedback from the community about some preferred alternatives. Then in December of last year, the administration presented to the tab and got feedback on an uphill bike lane. And then, two months ago, the administration came to this committee and had the same conversation about the uphill bike lane. And then, a month ago, the administration came here and talked about revisions to the street standards, and we took all that information and put it into the design study report that we're here to talk to you about tonight. And then, the final touchpoint on this planning study will be April 21st at the council meeting to get adoption by resolution. Before I dive into all the details of the project, I want to talk a little bit about the 2025 to 2026 budget. So, originally, when the capital improvement plan that was put together that included this year, and then, when the administration began doing budget entry, funds were included for this project to begin design on Phase 1 of the project to go to construction. There were some assumptions that were made. One of the assumptions was that the project would be designed and constructed in phases, so it never was, or at the time, we weren't thinking of doing it the whole corridor. And we also assumed that the majority of the work would be done with staff employed by the city, and we were planning that in order to reduce costs and not spend as much money on consultant dollars. Well, with the budget reductions and staffing reductions, the administration no longer has the capacity to advance the design of this project, and we don't expect to have capacity to work on this project until 2028. The existing conditions out there, the existing street out there is two lanes, one lane in each direction, it's got paved shoulders, no sidewalk, and lots of mature trees and single-family homes. The Phase 1 of the public engagement was done in summer of 2023, and this was really an opportunity for the administration to listen and learn from the community and to see what the priorities of the community were. And what we learned from the community are, they had strong support for sidewalk, general support for bicycle facilities, concern about speeding along the corridor. This next one, I'm going to say with a little bit of an asterisk because I don't think they were truly thinking of losing trees, but at the time, preservation of trees was not a high priority, although I think that was a lot because people, when they were doing the survey, were thinking we were talking about sidewalk, like what exists on Squawk Mountain, which doesn't have a planter strip with street trees. So, we took that with a grain of salt, that feedback. And also, on-street parking was not a high priority for the community in the Phase 1 feedback. And the administration took this information and developed alternatives. We came up with the help of our consultant. We came up with six alternatives that were evaluated. And one of the things that we realized was, the alternative that we called the full build-out, which met all the city's standards, had significant impact to trees. And even though, like I said, the Phase 1 survey wasn't so concerned about that, knowing this community, knowing how important trees are to this community, knowing all the city's goals around tree canopy, we paused for just a little bit and said, is that what the community wants? And we came to the administration on April 10th of 2024, and we asked the committee a couple of questions. We said, one, does the committee support revising the street standards to create exemptions to the city's standards, to not construct the planter strip in cases where we're preserving trees? And, two, is the committee okay with presenting alternatives that do not meet the current code to the community? And the committee said, yes, go ahead and proceed and do that. And the committee also said, standards are important, so develop guardrails, which is why we were here last month. And so, two alternatives were presented to the community. One of them had sidewalk on one side of the street and an uphill bike lane, and then, the other alternative only had the sidewalk on one side of the street, did not have a bike lane. And, yes.
Hey, John, can you walk me through how you came to the key takeaways? Because I was looking at the report on page eight, and I'm looking at the graph, and I see a lot more, if you kind of look at most important, second-most important, and even third-most important thing, tree preservation did a lot better than biking. So, I'm trying to figure out how biking became something that was generally supported and tree preservation wasn't.
Good question. I'll look to our consultant. Brent, do you have the answer?
Page eight.
Is this one that we could come back and answer?
Absolutely, yeah.
Let Brent look through the data and... Okay. So, when we did the Phase 2 outreach, the goal was to come up with, to gain insight on the public's preferred alternative. And it was really close, probably the closest community survey that I've ever been a part of. And there was a slight preference for including the uphill bike lane, with 51% supporting it and 49% not supporting it. And one thing, though, is the community did say that the alternative without the bike lane did score higher for avoiding impacts. And the administration and the public did not know the cost difference at the time. They were just wanting their input on what they truly would like. And then, after we got all that information and it was really close, the next thing that the administration did is we reached out to our consultant and said, can you look at the cost difference between the two alternatives? And it was an extra $2.5 million to include an uphill bike lane. So, the administration's recommendation was to not install the uphill bike lane. And we went to the Transportation Advisory Board and presented this to them, and they came to a unanimous conclusion that they recommended not installing the uphill bike lane, primarily due to the cost difference between the two alternatives. And then, in January, the administration came to this committee and asked the same question, should the uphill bike lane be included in the preferred alternative? And this committee supported not including the uphill bike lane, and the primary reasons were the additional $2.5 million, the cost, and the additional impact to trees. Then, last month, the administration presented about the update to the street standards because the administration had developed some guardrails and got feedback from the committee. And the committee was unanimous in supporting a deviation process to eliminate planter strips in order to preserve trees and also maintain driveway access. So, with that, we came up with the preferred alternative, which is on the screen now. It includes sidewalk on one side of the street, the existing two lanes for traffic, and the sidewalk, if we're going from south to north at Southwest Mount Markham Place, it's going to be on the east side of the street, and it's going to continue to the entrance to Upper Hillside Cemetery, where then there will be a pedestrian crossing, and then the sidewalk will continue on the west side of the street until it ties into the existing sidewalk near Northwest Furwood Boulevard. There will also be intersection improvements at Mount Olympus Drive and Sunset with an all-way stop sign in order to improve site distance, as well as a bulbout to help with crossings. The preferred alternative will include landscape planter strips in areas where the project is not trying to preserve trees, avoid impacts to critical areas, and in locations where driveways would not become unreasonably steep. The design alternative also considers the location of mailbox, having areas for mailboxes to go, as well as receptacles. That way, residents can put their compost and recycling and other solid waste bins out for collection and not block the sidewalk. There'll be traffic calming, which will include some bulbouts, as well as between intersections, several raised medians to slow traffic. And the total cost estimate came to $4,661,000. In addition, the administration also looked at what we're calling the lower-cost preferred alternative, and knowing that $4.6 million is a lot of money considering the city's current budget situation. And it's really similar to the preferred alternative, except for, instead of sidewalk, it has asphalt walkways next to the street, it has plastic traffic curb as a separator between the roadway and the walkway, and it would not be as comfortable to pedestrians as building sidewalk. One little nuance about this, it would require purchasing a new street sweeper because the city does not have a street sweeper that's small enough to go behind the curb. And the total cost estimate, including the purchase of a street sweeper, is $1,621,000. And this is what the lower-cost preferred alternative would look like. It's got the curb, which is in gray, separating the pedestrian from the travel lane.
Deputy Council President Michelle, De. Michelle.
Oh, just a quick question. So, the asphalt walkway, is that similar to like the blacktop walkway that's along Newport Way, on the east side of Newport Way?
Very similar. It wouldn't be as wide, but it would be very similar. It would be the same material that we'd use for the curb, but on Newport Way, we have it wider, so that way, there's rooms for pedestrians and bicyclists.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. What is a polyethylene traffic curb separator?
Plastic curb. The brand that we usually...
Tall, short?
Oh, I'm trying to remember if it's, is it three-and-a-half inches tall or six inches tall?
Three-and-a-half inches.
Yeah, three-and-a-half inches tall. You can see it on East Lake Semamish Parkway as you are heading north towards Southeast 56th. If you're going to make a left onto 56th, we've got some there. And we also have some on Newport Way near Bellevue.
So, is the asphalt walkway then the same level, same grade and level as the street?
Correct.
Or is it slightly... Okay, so, I got essentially an extension of the street with a three-and-a-half-inch polyethylene barrier between it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And then, I had a question. Would we expect the motorized e-bikes to ride in the asphalt shoulder or still on the road? And how are we handling any conflicts just generally in the city, if there are any, between e-bikes and cars?
The answer to the first question is that the e-bike should be in the street, in the travel lane. As for how the city is currently handling it, I think that probably would be a better question for the police department. I do know that they recently received a request in C.Click Fix with a resident that was concerned about e-bikes, and they did mention that the e-bike should not be on, in that case, the shared-use path.
Great, thank you. I didn't really want to put you on the spot. I was just curious because it is a kind of an emerging thing in town, especially people going up Squawk Mountain. You definitely need that extra support to make it up that hill. Thank you.
The options that this committee has are, number one, adopt the design study report without changes, and further evaluate the feasibility of the lower-cost preferred alternative for consideration during the deliberations of the 2028 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan. The second option is to provide revisions to the draft design study report. And the third option is to adopt the design study report without changes and direct the administration to not consider the lower-cost preferred The administration's recommendation is to adopt the design study report for Project TR-068 Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project by resolution, and consider the lower-cost alternative during deliberations for the 2028 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan. The timing and next steps for this project are, this item will go in front of the full council for adoption on April 21st. The second quarter of this year, the Capital Improvement Plan will be updated for the 2026 through 2031, and the administration's recommendation is to include the preferred alternative for planning purposes with this CIP. And then, during 2025 and 2026, the administration wants to further evaluate the feasibility of the lower-cost preferred alternative, because this isn't an alternative that's been presented to the community. We want to also look into maintenance obligations, liability, and really understand it before we advance it. And then, in 2027, the 2028 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan will be updated to include design in 2028. And I'm back to the direction needed, which is, number one, does the committee support the design study report and its recommended preferred alternative? And number two, does the committee support considering the lower-cost preferred alternative during deliberations for the 2028 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Questions from the committee. Councilmember Ray.
Do I have an answer?
Good evening, councilmembers. Brent Powell with Partite, consultant project manager for the study. The question Councilmember Ray you posed, I think, is a good one. I think we could clarify the language in the report slightly. The preserving trees item, the better listed, is not the highest priority, not to say that it's not a high priority, it's just not the highest. We did see proactive safety and walking as notably higher in the rankings from the public. And then, preserve trees was more middling, and then, slightly below that was biking and reducing speed. So, I think there is a slight reword that could accomplish what you're looking for.
Yeah, I think, actually, if you just use similar language to you did for the bike facility, for the trees, I think, you know, because it really does. I mean, the three-tier, five questions separate clearly into three tiers. Yeah, gotta have it, sure be nice, and, you know, don't worry about it too much. So, and what struck me just is, they seemed like they were getting different treatment and they had, and the numbers were upside down.
Yes.
Oh, great. That's perfect. If you guys can make that change, I think that would make...
We certainly can.
...a lot of clarity for that.
So, I know the two committee members to my right have heard this presentation a couple of times, or at least have had a couple of touches on it. I will ask, I don't know if this question's been asked or not, is there a skinnier skinny option? In other words, right now, we have an option that we're putting forward that will handle the goals of creating a walkable space and protecting the pedestrians there. It sounds like you started with a project that was $4 million-plus, and you whittled it down to 1.6 or whatever the new number is. And we, as councilmembers, just kind of always need to think about, is there a way to still make the goals with a lower-cost alternative for us to consider? If the answer is no, or there's not a way to do that, I certainly would like to hear that and know that as well.
My answer is, I would not recommend whittling it down more from what we have in the lower-cost preferred alternative.
And why is that?
Just in terms of need a certain amount of room in order to meet ADA, so a wheelchair has room to pass another wheelchair, that if you start whittling it down more, you start putting pedestrians in a more vulnerable position, which could be really bad for the pedestrians and a great liability for the city. So, I wouldn't whittle it down more than the $1.6 million option. And I also want to put the caveat, the reason why we want to consider that in 2027 is, we really want to do our due diligence on the lower-cost preferred alternative before we advance something like that, to consider liability to the city and other concerns.
Great. I appreciate that answer, and I think the citizens and those reviewing this meeting will want to have that answer, that we're trying to provide the minimum safety and allow walkability and allow for ADA compliance as well. So, those are great issues for us to make sure are out on the record. I appreciate that. Other questions? Deputy Councilmember De. Michelle.
Thank you. So, is this a project that would not be eligible for grants? Is there some reason that we haven't looked at other revenue sources? And I know some local projects aren't eligible for grants, but have you looked at that at all, or...
Yes, we have looked at it. It would really struggle to compete in grant competitions, and the main reason why is, there's just not pedestrian generators up there, like a transit center, or a grocery store, or a food bank, and there's not a job center. So, it's hard. In fact, I would even say, every city in King County has a neighborhood like Squawk Mountain that doesn't have sidewalk, that has single-family homes. And if there was a grant competition for sidewalk improvements in single-family neighborhoods, it would be fiercely competitive.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to public comment on this particular topic. If there are members of the public that are present or online that would like to comment on this topic, they're welcome to do so now. I'll just state that there's no one in the room from the public at this time, and I'll turn to the clerk to see if there's anyone online.
There is not.
Great, thank you. And again, if anyone has questions about this project, they can reach out to the city council email, council@isiquawwa.com, isiquawwa.com, pardon me, gov, thank you. And please reach out to us if you have questions. With that, we'll open it up to a debate amongst the committee. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. I don't know if it's debate, so much as it's more of a kind of opining on this body of work, so I hope it's not contentious. Great job in the alternatives analysis. So, kudos to you, John, and to our consulting partners on this. I love it. It was alternatives that looked at the data provided by the community, but also guided by a great, really big dose of pragmatism, and balancing off these competing community needs, you know, being cost-effective, providing a walkable space, preserving trees, not, you know, blowing up people's driveways. So, nice job. So, I am, with the changes we talked about, with some of the, you know, what are the priorities on the design study, I am completely supportive of accepting that document and the recommended preferred alternative, because we, when Squawk Mountain was built out, this was a very rural part of King County, and it looks like a very rural road, because it was, and it still is. And we are no longer a rural part of King County. So, we have a need, as a community, to provide better walkability and safe walkability, particularly on a very steep hill. So, I think we accomplish a lot with the preferred alternative and the sidewalk. Got to tell you, I'm not a super-big fan of the low-cost alternative, and even though it is less than half the cost, I don't think it accomplishes the number-one goal, which is the pedestrian safety, to the same degree. I've walked on what feels like just an extra-wide shoulder, and it's not the same as having that grade separation that you get with a real honest-to-god curb. So, my preferred alternative is the presented alternative as, without the, kind of, how do I value-engineer the pudding out of it? But I think that we can defer that until we are actually getting to a point of saying, okay, yes, we can do this at a lower cost, or we cannot do that at a higher cost. And that'll be a difficult decision we'll need to make in 2028 when we're doing the capital budget. So, I think you're on the right track. I think we keep them both on the table. I just want to be really clear. My preference is, we have real sidewalks because they have a real need for them. Thanks. But, yeah, great job. But yeah, great job.
Deputy Council President, DeMichele.
Well, I totally agree with Councilmember Ray in terms of a great job of presenting all the alternatives and showing, showing your work, basically. How did we get from six alternatives to three to two, you know? So I was reading through it, and I thought, this is a, this is something people ought to read to understand what we go through, the, the process that engineers go through to really look at every aspect and every impact of a project and figure out which one is going to be the best to offer. I, and as has been said, we've, we've looked at this several times before. So I support having the deviations that we've said that we want to have. I asked that question about the Newport Way asphalt, because I have walked on that many, many times. I used to live over in that part of town, and it's actually a very comfortable walk. And I realize that this one will not be as separated as, as that one is. But it's, I'm not as worried about it as Councilmember Ray is. I'll just, I guess I'll say that. It would be great if we could do it and have sidewalks on both sides, but then we're back to the $4 million project or close. And like you said, there, there's all kinds of things we've had to take into account, like the ADA, the width and everything. So I am, I am comfortable with going ahead with this. And I do think the report, let's see, we design, do we support the design study report? Yes. Recommended preferred alternative, yes. And I was prepared to come in and say, no, we've got to do this faster than 2028, but you did a good job of explaining the work that you want to do between now and 2028 to get ready for that budget discussion. So darn it, you convinced me. So, so yes, let's go ahead with all of those. Thanks.
And I'll just close with a couple of comments. I do support the design study report and its recommended preferred alternative. I'm currently trying to find a new house, or apartment, or condo. And as I'm looking at the, the listings, the walkability number is always something that I, I want to see. And if we can get the walkability number better for Squawk Mountain, I think that does a number of different things for us in terms of getting people out of their homes, increasing the property value for the citizens up there, you know, the list goes on. So I do support considering this low-cost preferred alternative during deliberations in the '28 and '33 Capital Improvement Plan. I'll echo Deputy President DeMichele's comments about the transparency that you have presented to us. Anyone that wants to look at this project can see the real meticulous way that the alternatives were considered, thought about, weighed, and then recommended to the committee and then on to council. So appreciate all the hard work that's been done on this. And I think you have a thumbs up from all three of us to move forward as you presented tonight. Any questions, or do you have the direction you need?
One question I have.
Please.
And that is for April 21st, consent or regular business?
I think that this probably should be on regular business. It's been an issue for Councilmember Hunt, who's no longer with us, but it has been an issue that she has been at the forefront on, and I think it does deserve a little bit of attention. Councilmember Ray, you were, had different thoughts?
So this is the, the consent, regular-business dilemma, which is, there's probably going to be very little debate or discussion about the topic. I don't suspect that someone's going to say, no, we want bike lanes on both sides and sidewalks on both sides and cut the trees down. Because I think you guys did a great job of nailing the, the decision, and it makes a lot of sense. And so if it's simply for visibility, then I, I guess so. But, you know, I guess it depends on what the agenda looks like that night, you know? And if we have a bunch of stuff on the agenda, then I'd say, maybe consent's okay. If the agenda's kind of light, I'd say, you know, put it on regular business.
Okay. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I, we know that Councilmember Hunt was very concerned about this project, and it has had a lot of public engagement. And so there may be members of the public that would like to come in and see it more fully explained. So I sort of tend to are putting it on the full agenda, but I agree with Councilmember Ray, if it's a heavy agenda that night, and after discussions, everybody thinks it ought to go on consent, or, then I would say, yeah, it's okay.
Okay, I'm concord with that. Is Andrea Snyder want to chime in on that to leave it to your discretion?
I just wanted to confirm it's not a heavy agenda that evening. There's quite a bit on the consent calendar, but in terms of regular business or other items, there's not a ton of things going on.
Then I, then I think, let's put it on the regular agenda.
Are you okay with that, Councilmember Ray?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
Okay, very good. Do you have all the guidance you need?
Yes, thank you very much for the feedback and input.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right. We're now just to general comments on the agenda, if anyone has anything they'd like to share, announcements. Okay, with that, we are adjourned at 7:06 PM.
7:06, dang. It's good for your first...